Y'all stand with me for a moment of silence, and then we'll have our pledge. Have our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna have a work session, which is, uh, we're just gonna discuss agenda items, go over them, see if there's anything that we need to talk about as we go, and then discussion of salary schedule. So we'll move through this pretty quick, gentlemen. Is there anything on there you want to bring up ahead of time? Please, if you're called. No, we don't vote on it, so it doesn't matter. Just bring it in.
Tina, where is Tina? On Edlio, is there going to be a convenience fee for usage of the cards?
Not to the school system, but there will be to the end user.
Okay.
So there is 4% cost for any charges, and then .35 cents fee. So there's no charge to us, but there is a charge to the person that's gonna be using their own card.
So that will be passed on to the parent or staff member, whoever is utilizing it?
Yes, sir.
And Tina, do you care to explain that for those that are not sure what that is?
Yes. So, um, one of the board members had asked that we become capable to accept debit and credit cards when possibly you have students that are gonna take field trips, or if you want to sell some type of merchandise. And the bookkeepers will be the ones that set those up, but that, it will be very helpful, I think, if you're wanting to do some kind of fundraising for your clubs or whatever. But in the past, we have not been allowed, able to allow the parents to use their debit, credit, and we've had to do cash or checks or whatever. And it just is a convenience that we want to offer to our parents. And we are unable to, Central Cafeteria will not be participating in this program because they are actually a separate account from ours, but all school purchases can go through this.
What would it take to get Central Cafeteria on board?
That would be a Ms. McCollough question, because I know theirs, their funding flows differently than ours, and so I think that's something that she would have to reach out with.
Because they're primarily federal, correct?
Yes.
And she's at NetCo, um, she usually doesn't get back till late. She may be at the board meeting at seven, but it depends on how long her NetCo meeting goes, because it's in Johnsons County.
Okay.
And we, we have actually talked a little bit about that, but it's not as easy for her to bring her funds in as it is for the school system to bring in the school accounts.
Okay. See, like, else?
Well, at what point do we wanna discuss this? Since it goes with the number eleven?
Yeah, I would, I guess.
Can, can we look at number 10?
Look at number 10 here?
If you don't care.
Yeah.
Number 10 has got to do with the contract regarding the bus signs, and we, what you have in front of you, and I'm so sorry that it is very tiny, this is how they give it to Tina.
It is, it's how they send it to us.
But you can see, since we started this program in 21, 22, for the signs to be on the bus, and Dr. Long was instrumental in that contracting, even though he's now at the high school principal, he, if you have any specific questions, he'll be happy to answer them as well. But you can see, and I tried to break it down every year, the revenue that we have received from the bus signs, and again, I am so sorry, it is very, very tiny, you can see who the ads are for, but as, um, currently has today, and this was today, this was printed today, we have had a revenue of $34,718.75. We did in May of '23 purchase an activity van that's used for sports and robotics and clubs, and it's a 10-passenger van, and it's been, it's wonderful. Uh, we did use $5,000 of those funds to help go towards that in May of '23. So right now, in that line item, there's $29,718.75. We would like to purchase another activity van, they run about, we bought one last year with Herbie's money with ISM, and it was about $51,000 for the 10-passenger van. Steven, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, not necessarily, unless they have questions, I'll, I'll just say this, and very briefly, it's, uh, I know that you get different opinions on the signs, they're not attractive necessarily, but it's a school bus, it's not the most attractive vehicle to begin with anyway, but, um, they, they find the sponsors, they produce the banners, they install the banners, they uninstall the sponsor, they follow them, and then search for new sponsors. We do nothing except receive this revenue.
And we keep 55% of the profit. They, they keep 45, we keep 50, and that's in the contract.
And if memory serves from your presentation last year, you all try and keep this dedicated towards transportation or things along those lines.
Yes. As Dr. Simcox referred to, it's, it's being said to go towards another activity van, when enough money...
If I, if my memory serves, that's the intention when we started it. That's what we were after.
I just wanted to share that information and see if y'all had any specific questions in regards to that.
Okay. Do you wanna look at 11?
Spend some time with number 11.
Okay.
And, uh, in front of you, it was requested to do a parent survey, Ms. Taylor, thank you for that request, and we actually did that that evening, and it closed at four o'clock today, so you have the result, results and the responses. Uh, 635 responses, so, but that's a lot, probably the most we've ever had for a survey.
That's what I was getting ready to ask, how many is that over an annual survey?
And this went to...
This went, this was on our Facebook page, I know that it got emailed out to staff members, um...
Parents.
Parents, parents from the Facebook page, but you can see, out of the 635 responses, um, my glasses on, 69.6% asked, said, stated they would like to keep our current telehealth with EMD, 30.4% said to do an RFP, which is a request for proposal, which we would have to do if, if we were searching for other vendors, to find another provider. And then, um, they, we did give them a comment section, not everyone commented, but you can see, I did attach the pages with, with all the comments in regards to, I guess, parents and staff's thoughts on that.
Some of these comments are pretty brutal.
They are.
I have.
Well, it's like I just read one right here, "If Valid is truly considered, I'd ask that you verify their collection policies. Our families can't afford any $50 fees and any other telehealth needs, to have separate collection policies approved." Some of these are brutal.
Mm-hmm. Uh, they are.
I mean, this one here, "We have good service."
Yeah.
"Listen to the staff, their input is more important than a personal vendetta. They care about the children and not who's, not who's making the money." You know, that's the intent here.
Yeah.
We don't care if EMD or whoever, ever deals for the service, because that's not, that's not, that's not part of our problem.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's simply to have the access to the service.
Yeah, I know. I think one of the biggest things with, with EMD is something that I've referenced multiple times, as far as just, are we providing fast, accurate, timely care to our students and staff? And especially with the students, there are possibly instances where that child will get treated during a telehealth visit, where if they went home, they in all likelihood would not be taken to the doctor. So it provides a very, very convenient option to, to just get kids some medical care for the acute issues they're dealing with.
There is some things I'd like to, but, but, you know, whatever happens, if, if we keep EMD, I'd like to do some adjusting if we can, or wherever we go, it still needs some adjusting, I think, but, uh, this, this helped make my mind up.
It actually solidifies my mind as well, because I've been straddling the fence on this today. I've had some staff members reach out to me, I've had several emails today in support of us keeping this current service, and some of it, and a lot of it, I think is truly justified in, in what they were saying. Ease of accessibility, the ability, the fact that we usually can, they can usually get a student, once they've done the vital signs and those things, can actually have them connected with Wendy, the current nurse practitioner, within just a few minutes, a lot of times can have a diagnosis, and actually have the child either back in the classroom or ready for the parents' pickup with a script waiting in the pharmacy if necessary. And I, that really says something. That's a concern that I have, if we change, whether it be Valid or if it be someone else, is that response time, because that response time means a whole lot, especially when you're doing this in-house, and you're dealing with students, and instructional time, and also dealing with staff that helps to, that provides that instructional time, the less time that they're spending trying to get some acute care and back to work or, or home to be able to recuperate is very important.
Um, I will, Mr. Chairman, Chastity Trivid from Johnson County Community Hospital, who actually dropped a letter off with me today, that she wanted to read during the board meeting, would you like to read it?
Sure. Go right ahead.
And she just says, "Dear members of the Johnson County School Board, thank you for the invitation allowing Johnson County Community Hospital and Valid Health the opportunity to demonstrate to the board and nursing staff our telehealth services. We welcome an opportunity to partner together, as we have on so many other healthcare projects in the past, and to provide telehealth services for the staff and children. If Johnson County Schools choose us to request RFPs from qualified telehealth organizations, Johnson County Community Hospital is interested in participating in this process, and would be honored to do a full presentation and answer questions, so everyone is aware of our services, prices, quality of care, and experience that our teams can provide the school system. My door is always open, and I would be happy to speak to any board member or staff member about these services. Respectfully, Chastity Trivid." And then she clarified something with me also earlier today, that one of the staff had reached out to me about, um, because there was a comment made as far as there being a five-year cutoff, or a five-year-old cutoff. So I did message her today and ask her clarification on that. They would still be able to treat the three- and four-year-olds who are in pre-K and Head Start for acute illnesses, pretty much a lot like what EMD is doing now, so it would be, you know, pretty much the same similar thing, as far as, I think the impression was still there in Monday's work session, that if it were a child under five-year-old, they would not be able to treat them, and she said they in fact would be able to treat them. So that was, that was kinda reassuring. But with that being said, 70% of respondents out of 635 people say to keep everything with EMD.
Can I ask a question on this one?
Sure.
I, I don't really have a dog in the fight either way, because I've never used our EMD telehealth, but I also have really nothing against Valid, um, and maybe this would be a better question for the board members who are not present, but I guess what is the main objection with EMD right now? Is it with EMD itself? Is it with the way that we have our, our setup with EMD right now, where we have a staff member on our staff who is also contracted with EMD? Is that the issue, or is the issue with EMD itself?
I don't know that I can answer that question.
I think you're correct, that that would need to be directed to the two members who are not here.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
I mean, and go on, and, and I know we've clarified this several times, there's been some missteps since 2018 with some things, and the issue with, with our current FBN, being an employee of the system and being a private, and also being an independent contractor to EMD, we've clarified, we've cleared that problem up. It's stipulated in a, in a corrected MOU that between the hours of eight and three, she, that, the nurse practitioner is our employee, she's paid by us, she provides these services with no additional compensation. Now, what she does before 8:00 a.m. and after 3:00 p.m. is totally her business, because at that point, she has the license and the right to practice, to practice medicine in that, in that regard. But as a clarification for, I know, the 17th time, we have corrected the issue with the MOU, and during the hours of, when school's in session, eight to three, Monday through Friday, she's our employee, no additional compensation. And I mean, I think we have beat that horse till it is dead.
Well, that's one of those things too, and it, and it may be real simple, we've got deputies back there, if they pull you over and tell you your headlights are out, you can't see them, they can't. You don't know that there's something wrong until somebody tells you. So if we don't have anything wrong, we don't know until they tell us. We'll stop right there. Ms. Clon, we have, just starting going through the agenda, uh, not, well, sort of discussing it before we go into a board meeting, but, uh, sort of digging out some things that you might wanna discuss prior to, uh, board meeting, to help with the flow of the revenue meeting. And, uh, we have discussed, looked at number 12, approved master services agreement with Edlio, and Tina has explained that, and, uh, if you would like to hear the against, you'd be glad to explain it.
Okay.
And, uh...
Did number 10.
Did number 10, and that's in front of you there, but it's about the signs on, on the buses, uh, that's the money we have so far.
You don't have to go back, it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Doc, I appreciate it.
Um, and right now, we're all, we're looking at, uh, number 11, and the, looking at the responses, we head back from the questionnaire.
Would you like to re-ask your question?
Can I be of time to do that?
I'll, I'll try to restate it as best as I can, um, I said, "I don't really have a dog in the fight on this one, because I've never used our telehealth EMD, so I can't speak to how, how good it is. I also have nothing against Valid in particular." So my main question was, what, what is, what is the main objection to EMD? Is it the EMD services that they provide, or is it our current structure where we have a school system employee also contracting with EMD? Because if it's that one, I would think that could be solved without going away from EMD, when it seems that, based on the survey, most of our employees and parents like EMD.
That was...
I, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Whatever everybody wants, that's worked for me.
So does anybody else have anything you want to look at on here ahead of time, or just...
I think the rest I can wait toward session, and then you actually can make some suggestions and feel from everything.
I actually have some questions as far as the budget update.
Okay. That one's hers.
On the balance sheets, as far as general purpose, central cafeteria, and, uh, pre-K Head Start, there are 18 total bonus payments that are listed on that, with the ones out of general purpose totaling $116,899. Central cafeteria was $7,000, and Head Start was $9,800. That's a lot of bonuses. What is that?
Right. So the pre-K, are you looking at, on the GP one? On the GP one, we actually had a grant that was written by Ms. Plank and Ms. Robinson, I think took care of that, and that grant had bonuses for longevity of the childcare program.
Well, like on the GP one, there's one for $64,700, uh, then there's another one for $750, $11,737, $7,100, $2687, $3750, $4,500, $1250.
Oh, is it cleanup?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know what he had.
He's just showing the increase from the original budget.
Okay, so here's what, here's what it was. So this is where you all decided to give bonuses to the certified employees, and we hadn't budgeted for that. So when we initially, or when the board initially approved their budget, they had an increase for certified, and then they had a smaller increase for non-certified, but a bonus.
So from what was approved on last year?
For the 24, 25 school year.
Okay.
So when we started the 25, 24, 25 school year, you all decided to do a bonus for the certified and an increase for the non-certified. So we had to go in and find the funds to cover all the, the rest that we had in there.
Okay.
So what that is, is that's picking up bonuses that we had not planned for, for both certified and non-certified.
So you're building the increases in, and then the decreases are where you're taking from other...
Yes, so what, what I did was I looked at lines that had extra funds, because I wanted to move it in current budget. I didn't want to have to ask you all to go moving it in fund amounts or reserves or anything like that. So I looked at lines that we were at least in the range, let's say we were 50% into the year, we'd only use 40% of that, then I would move from that into the bonus to clean the bonus up. So what that was, is that was cleaning up all the bonuses that you gave to the certified and the non-certified that we hadn't prepared or budgeted for.
Okay.
I, I have a little bit of a question. How many, or, maybe none, how many staff have credit cards?
Um, there's only two credit cards in the entire system, and one is with Dr. Simcox, and one is locked in a safe in my office.
So are they checked out and brought back in? I, I, I was under the impression in the past, several used to have credit cards? Is that true? Never?
Not while, not, not while I've been there.
Not while I've been director. I don't know.
I was just, I was just wanting to clear it up, so there's just two, and then when it's brought out for specific items, it's...
There's two, and normally what we...
Checked in, checked out.
Sorry.
Checked in, checked out.
Well, we don't normally check them out, so let's say that, um, let's say that you're gonna travel to Nashville, and so we'll set up in the, the travel arrangements for you, and we'll put it on the credit card, but we'll do a credit card authorization, so that the credit card doesn't actually leave. It's very, very rare...
So credit cards don't leave, and it's all prepaid before, they don't just go and then everything's checked in, and what, where does that come from?
Um, in the budget, is the staff, the staff development lines, it's just part of the budget that's set aside specifically for staff development. The only situations that I can...
Is it itemized in the staff development to actually say credit card purchases, or is it just...
It just says, it just says staff development.
So we really don't have an idea of how much we're spending on staff development versus that, because we're not itemizing? Is that correct? Is that...
Okay. Every, everything that's staff development comes out of 524. So like, if you're getting a hotel, or you're traveling outside of the county, it comes from 524, so that you know that, I can look and see exactly the pot of money that the travels came in of, and then I could do a printout on the journal that shows, um, Rob did, you know, or to Hilton, or, or whatever. And so a lot of registration fees, like if we're going to a state conference, or someone's traveling like that, they will allow checks. A lot of hotels now will not accept checks, so we have to do like either an upfront deposit and then some of the credit card authorization for the rest.
What if they need to lock down extension cords?
With an extension cord?
Just an extension cord.
Extension cord would...
It's anything.
Uh, well, there's a different line for everything. So let's say that you wanted an extension cord, then you go to our purchasing agent, she would have to find or locate where she was gonna purchase that from, she would have to set up a purchase order, and then typically, since that would not be considered instructional supplies and materials, it would come from a $499 or a $599. $429 is instructional supplies and materials, and that can only be used like paper, pencils, um, workbooks, things that are...
So it is itemized?
Directly being used, yes.
So it's itemized?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Um, like, if you have those lines, that this money went here, no, not petty cash, from which we don't have that, but...
No, we don't have petty cash.
But this is this, this is this, it's all in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Cool, thank you.
Anything else? There?
I'm sure you'll cover this in a little labor, where are we, where are we at as far as expenditures for the year so far? Just out of curiosity.
Um, in general purpose, the revenue, we are at 68.2% revenue received, and we are at 55% revenue expended, so we're great general purpose. Um, the federal projects, we are at 29.7% received, we are 50% expended, and those grants are all reimbursable, so we have to spend those upfront, and then if the project's completed or whatever, then we reach out on EPLAN and request reimbursement for those. Um, central cafeteria is the same, it's the reimbursable. We are at 37.7% on revenues, we are at 53% on expenditures, and I have copies of all this for y'all. Um, and then on the other special ed, or which is the Head Start, and this is taking a look at the fiscal, not at the calendar, we are at 64.9% received, 58.8% expended. Um, and then, just going ahead and mention, the sales tax and the property tax, for the month of February, um, sales tax was once again up, so there was an increase of about $9,000, but still, that's, that's a positive. And then property tax was also up from the same time last year. Last year in February, 17,000, 717,887 was collected, this year, 745,353 has been collected so far. Um, and we're getting close to, to last year's total, even though there was still four months later that was collected last year. So sales tax and property tax are both looking positive right now.
And I would like to add, um, and thank you all so much for last month, uh, voting for not only the $2,000 bonus that the state's gonna give for, for teachers, but also the bonus for support staff, but, uh, we have received word that that money will not be given to school systems till after July 1st. That's from the state, so no one will receive that till after July 1st, it'll be... So we will not be able to pay that out till next school year.
And it will be based, if I read that memo correctly, we have to, to use the 24, 25 certified staff rosters...
Yes.
Not the current year that we're in.
Correct, correct.
Now, support staff, we, it's a local decision, we do what we want today.
Yes.
And just as a sidebar that Tina was talking about, about sales tax, keep in mind that January 1st, there was a half-cent sales tax increase that went up in the county. I haven't actually crunched the February numbers yet, but in January, the overall, in the increase for the entire collection, which includes the town and mountain city and all that, was about $30,000 more than what it was for year prior, so it's gonna take, it's, it's gonna take six months or so to figure out exactly what that, that half-cent increase is actually doing, but, you know, it's a...
But it's a positive.
It's a positive, it's a great positive.
At least, at least we're getting it, and it ain't going somewhere else.
Well, and the state at this point has to send it back, and doesn't, and doesn't keep that.
Uh, anything else on the agenda for tonight?
I would like to, um, again, um, hit the bullying issue. Um, I'm pretty tired of it, um, laying awake at night, every night, um, being unable to fix it. I'm tired of it, I'm sick of it, and there's no excuse for it. So I don't wanna hear it's dash 44345, okay? I want a clear, concise bullying guideline with staff, with students, with administrators, uh, without favoritism. I've seen it all through the school years with my children, administrators actually, do one kid one way, as my kid walked in, and it's a whole other thing. So we talk about parents, and it's, it's true, I mean, a lot of people are in generational settings, and that is how they've done it for generations. They may useouthouse, that's what they're used to. Um, we have children that aspire to be nothing more than to, actually, one of my most dear people I love, um, she taught English, and she told me when she retired that she hated to retire, that she felt like she could not teach in this landscape of kids not caring to learn to read at third grade level, fourth grade level, because they didn't need to. Um, they were just gonna get a check, um, that the money come in the mailbox, okay? We, we, as a community, have to teach these youngins that they can rise, okay? They can, I feel like a broken record, I probably need to take myself, as I run across children and the ones that are beaten down, the young adults, and I'm told they were And I'm told they were never spoken to about what they could do. They didn't think they could go to college. We've actually helped a couple enroll at my clinic. And I'll be there every time they walk the stage, tell you that, I'll buy them dinner. Because they didn't know they could break the generational thing. That's, that's normal to them. They don't have anybody guiding them at home to let them know there's more out there or there's a better way or that they could break that chain and for the next several generations, no morals except for that, okay? And I always tell them, you need a two, a five, a ten, a fifteen, a twenty, where you wanna be. What do you need to get there? What do you want for your kids? Please don't be like me. Please make good decisions. And make sure you try to figure it out as early as you can before you have children. And go do your thing. Get yourself stable, become whole, find you. Um, get your house, get your bills, then have a child. And then you won't be missing out on your children's lives because you're going back to school, um, trying to get your life goals met. And you're in debt for student loans into adulthood. And you miss a lot of those wonderful years because you think you're out there humping it and you think you're out there doing the best for your kid so you can give them more. Because you never had anything handed to you, okay? And you've had to work your whole life, two or three jobs to get there. And, but if you would've been smarter, you could've done that stuff earlier. So we need to teach these children that they can rise. And we need to teach them how to be productive students, productive humans, and responsibility. So I keep hearing, we can't, we can't discipline them because their parents don't. I get it, I know. However, if you have a, a straight plan in place and when they enter pre-K, they're not, they were, they're very smart. They're like little sponges. And you teach them. And you teach the parents and you teach the staff and the staff's accountable. And so it's not favoritism because it's there. Uh, not with everybody, but it's, it's there, it's blatant. Um, we teach the kids that the teachers and administration is on the same wavelengths and they're there for them and everybody's gonna be held accountable. And they learn it that early. And you put it on the webpage, you put it on Facebook, you cover it with anybody and everybody that comes to parent teachers. You do it every semester, first class of the day, reiterate. Guess what happens? If you tell the little sponges, and everybody's actually following it, instructors, everybody, top to bottom, you don't have such a discipline problem, do you? Because they know the rules. And the rules don't change for Susie or Bobby, they're the same. Holding to this. They, they learn trust, they learn respect, and they learn to rise. And I think we're severely failing them, uh, because nobody really knows what's going on. Uh, the parents don't. So everybody says, well, they don't read their packets, they don't do this. Tell you what, it's called repetitive, okay? You continue to repeat it year in and year out. So in my opinion, uh, the board, the school, the parents, I don't care, everybody get together, have a survey. Needs to be one, two, three, great appropriate, okay? If you do this, this is gonna happen. It's not gonna happen once. If you do it six times, it's gonna happen six times. And this is what's gonna happen. And you stick to it. All the way through high school. You teach them discipline, we teach them discipline, and we make everybody accountable, not just the kids. We can do better. And, and that, and that's all I have. But nobody knows what's going on. And I think it's, uh, quite asinine that nobody knows what's going on. And I think it's quite asinine that a parent has to go somewhere and ask to, to fill out a bullying form. What? Why? If a parent's coming to you or a child, why do they need to make a special trip to get a bullying form? Just have a process. It isn't that hard. That's all I have on it, but we can do better.
Okay, anything else? We go to item number two, discussion, salaries given.
Yes, uh, one of the things that the board has requested is to look at our salary schedules. Currently, we are on an alternative salary schedule, we have been on that since twenty seventeen. Um, and, uh, we did survey the staff to see, uh, sort of what their thoughts were on that. And, um, I will say that we have about two hundred and twenty certified employees. Uh, we had ninety-six respondents to this, to this survey. Um, fifty-five said to move to a single lane based on years. Uh, thirty-one said to continue with the alternative salary schedule, which is based on LOEs. Uh, Tina and I have, have talked to several school systems that were currently, or were on an alternative pay scale and they've moved to a year's experience. And we wanna do what's best for our teachers. And I know our teachers have been very passionate about, you know, what they want and we appreciate that. We feel like we need a committee to do this right. When we did the alternative pay scale, we had a committee. You know, we met several times, we had the Department of Education here, we had the State Board here, because it has to go for State Board approval. So one of the things we would like to do, because it's their salary schedule. You know, you all will have to set, of course, how much each step increases and where we begin. But, uh, we would like to develop a committee made up of several teachers from every school and, uh, bring them in and just start having these conversations and get their input, their thought, because it's your salary schedule. And we definitely wanna do what's best for all of our employees. So, um, our recommendation is gonna be, if, if, if so be it, we would like to start a committee. Um, when we did the alternative pay scale, which was through our TIF grant at the time, that was back in twenty eleven, um, we had several teachers on there and we had a board member as well. So that is something that we would like to, to do, uh, Tina and I would, if, if you all would allow us to do.
Gotta start somewhere.
Well, and I know, I know there was a push to do it like right now immediately, but the school systems we've talked to, some of them are allowing like up four and five years, which we don't want that. But like, you know, if you're looking at a half a million dollars to move them onto the yearly. I mean, so that's why we want, that's why we want the teachers. It's their salary schedule. I mean, we're just here to do what we're told. We're here to take those numbers and, and give it to them. And so we have very passionate people that, that have discussed the years, but then we also have people that have kind of attacked back on the LOEs. So I think if we have a combination, um, maybe you all could set deadlines and say, hey, if you could have maybe a couple ready to take to the entire system by January, put it into the, to the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. Um, you could look, see what kinda steps you're looking at. But, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we have any right to say, here, here's your salary schedule.
Because when we sent the survey out, that, that first draft, we were on draft seven or eight. And it's just, you know, it is your all salary schedule. So moving everyone over to year's experience is not an easy process. And that's what we found out in speaking with other school systems. So that's why we wanna have a committee and have input and make sure that we're doing what's best for our teachers and what they want. And, um, so that, that, that is why we would like to do that.
Response? If the board will permit, we have an entire room packed full of teachers. I'd like to get their take on things if that's acceptable.
I'd love to.
I'm gonna first hand up right in front.
Okay, I know I said a lot the other night, I promise you I will not tonight. And I did not plan on saying anything the other night, uh, but this time I planned it. So this will take me all of thirty seconds and I, and I'm done, okay? Promise, okay? Um, and the only reason I'm asking is I had a few students ask at the high school level today. So the only reason I wanna read this is because I think there's confusion on it in the community. And I think it's really important that as a school system, the community knows what's going on in here. And I think, I think that would help it. So, um, I think it's important for everybody in Johnson County to understand a few things before we talk about the salary schedule. Teachers are not complaining that we don't get paid enough. Now, that might be a complaint for all teachers in Tennessee, but that is not why we are here tonight. Our current pay schedule in Johnson County is a merit-based scale. The merit is determined, and if I'm wrong about anything, stop me. The merit is determined by student test scores and our yearly evaluation scores. And for anyone who thinks the merit-based scale doesn't sound like that bad of an idea, please remember that only certain teachers have tested subjects, okay? So what about the art teachers? What about everybody else, okay? What about teachers that don't have a TCAP or are tested subjects? Lots of times, those teachers will get the average of the merit-based scale for the whole school, okay? So it's not really based on their merit. Um, so, um, teachers, we all thought this was a bad idea many, many years ago when it was first presented to us and I was in a faculty meeting where that used to be a library. And I remember throwing a fit now then, and so I came back to do it again. So, um, so we've asked our central office and our school board, uh, for years to come up with an experience-based scale like we used to have and like all other counties surrounding us have today. And this means that our pay will be based on how many years' experience we have. And if you wonder why all the teachers are here tonight, it is because the merit-based scale and the experience-based scale have one thing in common. And that is that in many cases, new hires will make more than our veteran teachers. We are here tonight to say that we believe in equal pay for equal experience. We are bleeding teachers. The kids will complain at the high school about what happened to this teacher, this teacher, this teacher, this teacher. Where did all of our teachers go? Okay, they're going to places where it's based on experience and they're getting a ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollar raise in a matter of a month. The only way to keep teachers in Johnson County is to pay us what we're worth. And that is no more or no less than a new hire. So I understand that it's gonna take half a million dollars to fix a problem that we should've fixed fifteen years ago. But it's time to fix it and from here on out, everybody be the same. It is not fair for somebody who works in Johnson County to be a fifteen-year Johnson County teacher and have their pay moved back to an eight-year experience. And then hire somebody out of Carter County with fifteen years' experience and they get a fifteen-year experience pay. That creates a lot of strife and it creates a lot of problems and it creates a lot of anger. And we should be here for the students, we shouldn't be here mad about other type of stuff. So it needs to just be one equal thing and the sooner we get to that, the better. We can make five hundred committees. And I know there are some certain grades that do make a whole lot more money because they get a five every year. And I know there's this little pod and that little pod and this little pod and that little pod. But overall, it's gotta be the same and it's gotta be equal. And that's all I have to say, and I promise I won't talk. Goodbye.
That we did yesterday and we sent this out to all the teachers was, um, in T and Compass, it does list their years of experience. Um, however, that's only if you have Tennessee years of experience. And so we do have several people that come in from North Carolina, Virginia, and we have that in their personnel file. But we just wanna verify that years of experience is truly what your years of experience is. And I do appreciate, we've had several reach out, say, hey, will you check this out in the file? Because sometimes they don't bring information in in their file. So, you know, we have to, to look at the file, see if you've come from North Carolina, this is how much years of experience you got. And sometimes they forget to tell us they got an advanced degree. Uh, so, you know, that's very, very important because that does need more money. So I do appreciate y'all looking at that, please, if you see anything, please contact Tina or Bridget or myself. Uh, because we are working, we are working hard on this and we, we are hearing what you're saying and I agree, so, yeah.
And, and I totally agree. I've been contacted many times and I've sat and I've looked at that schedule where we move people over and it doesn't make sense. But I didn't make it and I can only do what's on the piece of paper. Um, so, I mean, there is, that's why, that's why we want help. I mean, the, the last one that was rolled out in seventeen, there was committee, there was people from the state, there was, you know, and I don't want anybody saying that, oh, Tina and Dr. Simcox shoved this on us. It's not ours, it's yours. I mean, we appreciate you, we wanna keep you, yes sir.
But when it was brought out in twenty seventeen, we had a faculty meeting and a school board meeting, was that not? So the teachers didn't even know what's going on. Most of them still do not understand what we're talking about. So I disagree. I mean, I know you're saying, well, we've got a lot of issues, you know, we gotta find this, find that. But since two thousand nineteen, I've been complaining about it. I let Kevin have it, county commission meeting over.
Oh, you called me before too.
Yeah, I've-
We talked about-
I've sent many emails and many phone calls and it's time to fix it before we lose any more good teachers. Uh, you know, Ms. Klein is talking about doing what's best for children. If we don't set the example of good teachers staying in the county, why does that student wanna stay and work here?
I have to say real quick, I'm sorry. Um, I actually typed up a very long response to that. Of course, I shouldn't say of course. However, I got no response, no discussion. Um, 'cause I don't understand it. Um, happy employees perform better. It has better morale. Um, our teachers shouldn't be buying stuff for classrooms, they should be recognized for their years. And I said as such, um, I know I went to Nashville and I love to learn. So I soaked it up. I asked questions. I met a lot of cool people. Uh, it also disheartened me because that in here, to be honest. Um, it's really weird. Um, I was in awe of how other places did it. And you guys do deserve it, you got hard jobs. Um, and you should be commended and you should be taken care of, okay? Because you're gonna take care of our kids a lot better. Um, I, there's a lot of stuff that can be better. Um, I don't like how their evaluations are done, I think that's stupid. I mean, I don't know that there's a better word for it, okay? Because, uh, just like children, there's cliques. Family, friends, so-and-so don't like the way you dress, the way your teeth look, whatever. And they may be evaluating you. Okay? You're gonna get three, doesn't matter if you're the best teacher in the system. I don't agree. I don't know what the answer is. Um, this really cool administrator, I was in awe of him. I soaked up his class. I was so happy I chose that class. Um, and it was for you, for the educators, I went in there on purpose to see what we could do better. And it's amazing. So him and his staff, it's not teachers, it's not a certain group, it's not this and that. Um, he himself, he's a cool dude too. Um, him and how were they? Can't remember exactly how they did it. I, I would have looked at my notes from Nashville and find out which system it is because I would like to work, figure out exactly what it was he was doing, so I can just remember the gist of it. But they would go in and they would do, and I'm probably gonna say this wrong. They would go in and they would do something like a timing thing, just periodically through the semester or whatever the periods were coming up. And they would be like, sixty seconds, right? Sixty seconds, right? Sixty seconds, right? And what they were doing, what happened in that first sixty seconds? Was the class engaged? Were they ready to learn? How did they go about it? Next sixty seconds. Are we getting learning time? Next sixty seconds. Blah, 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 that's kind of the gist of it. Um, and it was a system and everybody loved it, like their whole board was there and it was, it was beautiful. So I don't know what the answer is, but I agree with all you guys, you're out there humping it, you're out there working. You know what you need. Um, I agree, who wants to come in and work? If somebody come up in here that has no experience and make way more than you, I think that's, for lack of a better word, crap. That's all I have, I just wanted to say, I, I agree and I think y'all need something better, in my opinion. Oh, wait, sorry, another thought. I've had this question on my mind. So, okay, say there's issues and say somebody switches positions. Say they asked to switch positions. They swi, they asked to switch positions. And it's way down from where they were or way up from where they're, how, whatever. Who, who then decides to, they lose that pay because they chose to step back? Or do they get to do just a piece of the work they once did for this big amount of money? And now they're doing the work of something very simple and it's definitely not that kinda money. Then what happens?
Um, they are contracted during the year. You cannot lose money during that contracted year. So if you go from a position of being, for example, administrator to a teacher, you're gonna make the same pay for the rest of that school year because you're contracted under that by law. Now, it comes July first, then you would go into the teacher salary pay.
I thought they didn't have contracts.
Teachers do.
They have your- They have yearly contracts.
Oh, that, yeah, 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 that just started our room now, sorry.
No, it didn't, that's always been the case.
Oh, they've always had one?
But this is the first year they've signed.
This is the first year that they've signed.
Well, then it's not a contract if it's not signed.
They have yearly contracts.
State law stipulates that they operate, that teachers are employed under contract, whether it be written, verbal, or thereof.
Somebody had told me they just got a piece of paper.
No, every year they get a placement letter.
It had like their name on it.
This is the first year that they have a salary.
No, it was like a piece of paper.
Yes, this was the first, but they, every year they get a place on the letter. And that, that happens at the end of the school year, required by law to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have, you spent, one question, do you have any idea what it would take to fix that this year?
It depends on what you wanna put between the steps.
And I'll tell you what, what we have done so far is we have went, and that's why again, we sent out the spreadsheet saying, please make sure your years of experience are verified. We have took every teacher in the system and we have categorized them based on degree and years of experience. So, for example, if you have a bachelor's degree in zero, a bachelor's degree in one, a bachelor's degree in two. So, to get everyone to the same pay, if you're basing it on years of experience, you gotta put in that years of experience, for example, of two, you would have to go with the highest. Because you can't, you can't penalize someone and not pay them what, things that we had in T and Compass and what we showed in the personnel file. That is about, and that, and if we did it at a five hundred and fifteen dollar increase, step increase. Yeah, that would be about four hundred thousand dollars. That is not including what you all decide to do as far as raising up, because you know, in two years, we gotta get to fifty thousand, we're at forty-six thousand. So, that we have done, we do have that, but again, it's making sure, because we're finding out, you know, some of those, especially out of state, we're not, we're having to verify that their experience is correct in their personnel file. So, and that was just making it at five, five hundred and fifteen dollars, just to try. Now, there's a few outliers that don't really, it's been a little bit harder, that's why we had to get it to five fifteen.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who tracks these steps? Was it like ninety-three steps?
That's based on your LOEs and how much.
Who's gonna, of any, who tracks them?
Personnel, I mean HR.
I, I, I know some people that went in and they thought they had way, way more steps or made way less steps and they weren't accurate. And then that can directly affect their pay that they worked so hard for.
And every year they're asked to look at their pay and look at this.
But it's not, it shouldn't be their job to track steps, I have to track my staff's shirts and stuff.
But to look at their pay.
Well, hell, a little fuzzy though, but if you lose track of your steps, then what? How do you know what your pay's supposed to be?
I have to take your mind at work. I take your mind.
Yeah, but I mean, this is a huge employer.
The, actually, the form that they gave out at the beginning of the year, it has the steps on it. And then they, whatever the LOE is, then we know how many steps to move on. And then it goes on to human resources and they confirm that there was an increase and then it gets keyed upstairs, so.
Who keys it upstairs?
My office.
Yes, Mr. Robinson's office.
Wait, what?
My office runs the payroll can. He comes up front.
So, during the day, you're doing the payroll upstairs?
I'm responsible for eight hundred and fifty employees, countywide.
God, I'm sorry.
And that includes the school system.
I'm sorry.
So, before, before, I've got a lot I wanna say on this, but I know Evelyn is ready to turn it over.
Yeah, Evelyn is ready to turn it over.
Me?
Go ahead, turn it over.
Okay. I've devoted my whole life, my whole career to Johnson County schools. I started in September, not August, September of nineteen ninety-six. I, before that, I subbed and volunteered and things like that. But it was as an assistant that I was hired. For ten years, I did that while I went to school to get my degrees, nights, weekends, summers. But my teaching experience shows only nineteen. Well, that's a catch twenty-two there because how are you going to calculate for me? Because, you know. That's twenty-nine years compared to nineteen.
But you dedicated twenty-nine years to us, you've, you have given us twenty-nine years.
Right.
Well, you did your twenty-nine years.
To me, I'm a valued employee. I have worked for the system for twenty-nine years. So, I have, I've been committed, I've been loyal, I've, I've loved these kids like they're my own. I still do. And I do everything for them every day. I teach from bell to bell, I, I'm totally committed to my job. All of you know that. And, and I do everything I can for them all the time. They know I love them. Even when they're bad, I love them, I say, I'm like, Jesus, I love you when I'm, when you're good and when, when you're bad. But anyway, you know, it puts me in a situation, and I just got the email today, this morning, and I did reach out with an email, but I know you're probably busy, there's a lot of people, no.
I'm sorry to say it again.
I just, I sent an email, but the person may have been out of the office or something, didn't get back with me, but I understand that. But I just wanted to come to address that because I'm a little bit different with the situation. But it shouldn't just be my teaching years that puts me on that scale.
You know what hurts my heart right now? Your tone of voice and the need for you to be there saying that. And having to try to show us how valuable, valuable that you are to us. I'm sorry. And I'm sorry that, I mean, come on now, you've been here twenty-nine years and by God, you should get them, okay? I don't understand why you wouldn't. How that, I mean, let's say asinine again, how would I do the work? That's stupid. You've been here twenty-nine years, I don't care if you're certified, I don't care if you're scrubbing toilets, I don't care what you're doing. You have dedicated your life to these children, it's obvious you love them, why are you here having to beg for that?
I wouldn't be here if I didn't.
Yeah, well, obviously, yeah, but I think it breaks my heart that you're sitting there having to tell us how much you love them. I, I, I think that's sad, but I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had your hand up.
Yes, several of you know me already as president of Johnson County Education Association. I have reached out to, I think, every board member and spoken to them individually as well as Dr. Simcox. And I have received wonderful feedback from every one of you, so I want to thank you for that, I wanna thank you for giving us time and for trying to work together with us to come to a solution. But sitting back here reflecting on what has been said, for instance, from the standpoint that Brian is coming from. Do I think it is something that can happen tonight? No, I do not. I think that Dr. Simcox and Ms. Lickford are in a very difficult position. I was suggested to make a sample salary schedule for our folks from JCEA. And I understand that is impossible, looking at the salary scale that we have now. But at the same token to what Ms. Klein was saying, it's very difficult, I hear daily as I talk to folks about our pay schedule that we are on now with the step scale. It's very difficult for us to understand where we are on that step schedule. Because, just because it says one thing this year, next year, if the state approves a two percent raise. Now, we've got to factor in the two percent raise plus the LOE. And did the LOE get factored in correctly or are we holding over from something else? Are we tested, are we not tested? So many factors go into that, that it is very complex for us to understand where we truly should be on the scale, even doing our own bookkeeping. I keep my staff written down every year. But every year, it seems that I still have to call Bridget and say, is this right and am I taking? Yes.
Yeah, that is, that is.
We're always a year behind.
We're always a year behind.
So, even if, if I got a five this year, I wouldn't see that.
Till next year.
I'm not gonna see that anyways, it's not like I get rewarded for that five in August, that, it takes a, and then, so if you move to a different system, that reward's never even realized.
Tell me who picks your five?
The state.
Does anybody ever get a two, but you felt like you were a five and you feel like the people that are, I mean, be hon, please be honest.
Oh, yeah, it happens.
Come on, be honest. But let's be honest here. Do you ever go into your evaluation and you're like, oh, dang it, I pulled the short stick. They do not like me, they think I looked at their, whatever. Do you ever feel like that? Do you ever feel like, oh, God? And while your students, your parents, your community and everybody else thinks you're a fifteen. But Ms. May, she thinks you're a two. She don't care for you, she got a little jealousy, you know, you're cute, she's not. You know what I'm saying? Do you ever feel that, anybody? Ever feel that?
I think all teachers in this room, and I don't see an exception, from people who have educated me and people who are educating my children, people I know on a personal level. I think all teachers in this room strive to be a five.
Of course.
There will be extenuating circumstances from year to year, maybe you had a baby this year, maybe you had a sick family member this year, maybe things didn't land where they wanted to be. Maybe you had a really difficult class with a lot of difficult, diverse needs. I think we all strive to hit a five. Will we always meet a five? No. Is that their fault? No. Is it our fault? No. Sometimes just the way the cookie crumbles. But to finish what I was saying, to Mr. Taylor's point, if we say we want a solution tonight, and I agree with him that it does need to be soon, because if you extend it, next year, we're on task for forty-seven thousand. As the starting point, we have several, several of our employees this year that are new to our system or new teachers in general. So, if we start somewhere this year, we can start at that baseline fairly without having to build any extra a thousand, two thousand dollars, depending on where we land at as the starting rate. For everyone across the board, if that makes sense. Because next year, you're not only jumping a thousand, two thousand dollars from the governor, you're also jumping the experience that will go along with that. I've had several emails that have wondered, based on the years of experience in education that was sent out yesterday, what if I am not at the correct years that I should be at? Do I get reimbursed for the difference in pay from where I should be versus where I am if there was a boo-boo on the accounting side? And I don't know the answer to that, that would be something that you all.
Don't ask me what.
Yeah, and, and really, the way, the way the salary schedule is now with the steps, it is not based on years of experience, other than the first three years. But, you know, that is definitely something, you know, we can, we can look at.
I mean, I admit, doing year to year would be so much easier.
It would be easier.
It would be so much easier if somebody calls me and says, why am I here, where am I, or whatever. I mean, I admit, I'd be one, I'd be very happy to throw it out, but.
We've got no budget turned in by.
And we actually have to have it by May first because the consolidated application is due.
And I wanna be realistic, I know it's not gonna be tomorrow, but I've been complaining since two thousand nineteen. I emailed you, I've emailed, the other board members weren't on the board at the time, and I've never got a response. You know, it's like, get back to work, don't worry about your pay, just go back to work. But I do worry about my pay.
Not defending.
And I worry about my family. Because that's what I'm doing.
I'm the only member up here that that happened when, when we done that. And, and not defending anybody, but I, I really thought we was doing our thing when we done it.
Right, and I agree with that, but by two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, it should've changed. Here we are in twenty-five, we're saying, let's make a committee, put it off another year, it'll give Russell time to get to the Johnson County budget balance to see if we can give the teachers the money. It needs to happen.
Well, there's a reason there are only six districts left in this state that use this base scale.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's where it come from.
Casey, before I, before I go off.
The other question that I had was, what kind of deadline is reasonable for the committee to have something in hand for those folks? Whether it start taking into effect this year, next year, what's a reasonable timeline and can we set that now, since it obviously can't be set tonight? So that we do get the ball rolling and we do get the issue taken care of sooner rather than later. And then also, I know that salary scales are approved for a certain length of time. When does our current one expire?
Well, it is, it is state board approved, any salary schedule has to be state board approved. We can just submit a new one to the state board, you know, and if, if you all, if the board says, no, let's do that starting effective July first, we'll get that worked out, send it to state board. So, that, we'll just say, we're making a change to our, our salary.
And in lieu of the difference that we're seeing between outside educators, inside educators, those that are coming from outside of our county to fill the positions that are needed, I know differentiated pay is.
Differentiated pay, we do have to do, that is state law. You know, and because we are on an alternative pay scale, we've always met that requirement. One of the things that the board would cho, so choose to do is if you are an LOE of five, that you get a five hundred dollar, and I'm just throwing numbers out, you get a five hundred dollar bonus at the end of the, the year. Because we do have to have a differential, differentiated pay plan requirement. So, we would have to have something in place for those educators that are fours and fives below.
And then just our timeline is my only concern, if you guys could answer that.
If, if, I'm, I mean, you've got a lot of this legwork done.
Actually, I have.
She has worked, I mean, she hasn't just pushed this aside, she has worked day after day, changing numbers, changing this, changing that, just trying to make it work.
And my, my thing now is just how much you all want it to be from each year.
What you're saying, five fifteen.
Five fifteen's where I'm at now.
Is at least the minimum.
There's two.
And that's the rough equivalent of two steps on the pay scale every year.
Two steps on the pay scale would actually be five.
Two steps, what is it again, how much, what are you talking about?
Two steps on the pay scale would be five thirteen, I actually did five fifteen.
Five thirteen is in five dollars?
No.
Five hundred and fifty on what now, what is this? Sorry, I was hungry in my mind, something else.
If we did a yearly experience, what I have worked on is to make it work, other than there's a few, but each year's experience, each year you would gain at least five hundred and fifteen dollars. That does not include what you all would put in.
That's not very much.
You'd have to, well.
Well, when you look at other systems that are comparable to us, but you gotta remember, we gotta figure out, some of these, some of these, some of these teachers, if they are at, and I'm just gonna throw a number out there. If they're with a bachelor's and eight years' experience, you gotta get that group of teachers to the same amount because nobody can lose money. So, at eight years, I'm just throwing this out, if eight years' experience with a bachelor's, the highest paid person is fifty thousand dollars. Well, you also maybe have somebody in there that's forty-six thousand dollars. Guess the forty-six thousand dollar person has to make fifty thousand dollars to make, to make that even.
To make it even.
Is there anybody in the system that's not on the scale that they make way more for the same amount as somebody else for that year? But with the same degrees?
I don't know.
I can tell you that there's someone in the system with seven years' experience that makes less than a new hire this year makes.
Yeah, but like say, if people, if people.
There, there is a few, if they've been a consistent five every year and they went up three steps, that does catch up with, with some. And that's the ones I said, we have a few that are just sort of outliers.
Is there, like massive, is there, is there an issue with like somebody with the same degrees and the same years of service, they may be somewhere else, they may not be in the classroom, they may, who knows, run it by us, I don't know. Is there people that are way up here and how did they get there?
No.
No?
No, not, not way up.
So, but at the, Sandy?
Is there a possibility, and I just want that to be out there, I understand that like finessing all these numbers is incredibly difficult. But is there a possibility of looking at the yearly steps at a percentage raise instead of a, a set rate? Because, you know, that first year, it looks like a really big raise, but the more money you make, the less percentage it is each year. So, like if we start at fifty thousand. So like if we start at fifty thousand and we do one percent, each year that one percent gets smaller. Is that something the board would consider eventually when the money's there?
Why can't we hire a consultant to come in and, and talk to these guys and discuss what's working and not working throughout the state or even in other states? Why don't we have somebody come in here and review all sorts of stuff and, and see what's best for the staff? I mean, you got, you got educational consultants that can come in and do this and you have to worry about crunching numbers. It'll get done a lot faster.
You know, that it would be done by July. I don't want it to be done by May.
Uh, my point was going to be that I can't look at percentages based on years. And if you go just about as low as you can go on the salary scale, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand dollars increase per year, which would one day be wonderful.
It would be.
But when you put that into play for everything right now, it would break them in their defense.
And that's why I asked, like, is that something the board would consider if the money ever was there? Like, in the future?
Oh, yeah.
That's something that could be looked at.
I, I mean, I understand it's not a feasible option if we want something changed now.
I have another question. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Um, all I keep hearing is these people need better money, okay? And to get them that have put in twenty-nine years over there, ma'am, thank you again, to get them the money they deserve, the ones out here humping, and I know who you are, okay? And I know it's hard on all of you. And I know there's life and there's bills and there's whatever else in life. And it's a lot. And you have to worry about money, yet you're in here humping, okay? And I just, that's very short, but, oh, that's what I do. I don't know what it was. That's sad. Um.
Well, I had something I wanted to ask.
Let me, let me think about it, because I had the whole thing that was.
So, like what Brian's talking about, I do agree this needs to happen now. There's honestly no debate in my mind about that. Equal pay for equal years of experience. Now, you've said it may cost us about four hundred thousand dollars?
At the five fifteen, to get everyone, it was, it was about four hundred thousand dollars.
So it should be easy for us to cover that.
Yes.
So it should be, it should be easy for us to cover that, folks.
Okay, I remember.
We would have to.
Can I, let me finish?
I don't want to finish.
I'm sorry, she was talking.
So that four hundred thousand dollars should be easy for us to cover because we just approved Tennessee Connections Academy contract with roughly eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars a year in annual funding. That was to be dedicated towards staff enhancement and salary improvements. If we hadn't improved, approved that, we wouldn't have had that money, so how are we going to balance the budget?
We, it would have been hard. It would have been very hard. And you have to, you have to remember that's a recurring cost, so that will be a, a cost we will have.
To keep moving.
Yeah. Well, then I think we need to cut parts of the budget, trim parts of the budget. I know it's hard, but at the end of the day, this school system's number one resource, without any question, is its staff. It's not technology, it's not buses, it's not these fancy cameras or how many chairs do we have? It's not, do we have a great looking new field house? It's everyone sitting in this room. If we invest in our staff and we take care of them, going along with what you said earlier, happy bees make more honey. It will have a trickle-down effect that will go through the entire system. And it's talking about certified and support because we need to take care of our support staff.
Yes, we do.
Big time. So it is extremely important that we invest in our most valuable resource, and that's this roomful of people sitting here and watching this on YouTube right now. Because without them, we don't have a school system.
Sure.
We don't have education. We don't have future leaders. So I think that it's something we need to try and make happen now and make it a reality. And if forming a committee, and if we can get it done that quickly, and it's going to take pushing, and it's going to take teachers stepping up and being on the committee, investing a significant amount of time. But I think it's something that we need to make a reality.
We're done already anyway. We're ready.
We're ready.
Well, we could, and again, I have done a lot of the legwork, as far as looking where everybody would, would fall. And, you know, we could, we could have a meeting early, early next week.
You got, we got to have seven days basically to have another work session.
Well, no, now, this wouldn't be us. This would be a, if there's just one.
What, what I, what I was going to say though, if you have one board member and you get this committee together and they, they, and you, you work it out, we got seven days, we can have another.
Oh, yes. So we have essentially forty-seven days to submit our budget to the state.
And then we've got another one.
We need to evolve it to the federal, federal budget.
Federal.
The, the problem is the federal, the federal dollar budget is due May, May first. So we've got to figure, we, we've got to make this decision to give them time to make the adjustments in the federal budget the best that they can to be able to compensate.
And historically, we have voted on the school system's budget in the first week of March in a special call session. Or May.
We usually start work sessions, like we've had work sessions March, and it's maybe.
But then the budget vote is normally that first week of May in a special call session.
Yeah. Which, you know, I don't know why we do that, but it, you know, it's. Kim, did you want to finish your?
Yeah. That's ADA, ADHD at its finest in their coffee. I just threw him from gray. Um, had to write it down. So with all that being said, they're all needing more money. They need it now. I mean, they already have a plan, they, they've already figured it out. They've already done your legwork. So my question is, you're saying, well, maybe we'll give you five hundred bucks? Ew, in my opinion. Okay? Um, because I say that, but wait a minute.
The biggest one's the raise.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a reason for saying that. We sure have all this money. I mean, just like when we threw that, and I, and I, don't get me wrong. I had, I never had a problem with the meat plant. Not, I never had a problem with the meat plant. I had a problem with the fact that I'd been on the board for a long time. Been working on it for all these years. I've seen the folks today, look at us, we're breaking ground. I think it's cool, okay? That's great, whatever. But I've been on the board and I literally was not allowed, there was nothing in the package, okay? There was a blueprint, and showed road frontage, which doesn't matter now because that land's been flipped. That was the purpose of getting it done so fast, but that's the top point. So, we, we can do all these things. I mean, I, I, as a, as a board member who was elected by the public to be a good steward of our funds, it's one thing if you're the one paying the taxes, and yeah, you pay taxes. But when you're the big man, you never really, I mean, you work. But you didn't work for the money you're in charge of. You didn't work for it. That's taxpayers' dollars. But it gives people a lot of power. I'm in charge. I didn't earn the money, but I'm in charge of the money. It's not your money, bud, okay? But as a person that was elected to protect your money in the school system, I wasn't even allowed, really, to look at projections, at finances. Just Klein, just, just stop. Just stop. Um, we got it. Um, well, well, how, how, what's the projections? Like, when the grant's gone, the grant's not even big enough to pay for the bid, the bid. Okay? I don't get it, so please, please help me understand. The grant was for the cosmetology school. It's also for the meat plant. Okay? I'm in a granted building, okay? What happens when that grant runs out? It gets relinquished, okay? The county gets another building. So if the school stuff flops, here we go, we done sunk that in there. How much is it going to cost to insure teenagers playing with machines that can cut their friggin' body in half? Nobody can tell me. The grant's only for so long. Where's the money come from? How do we, how do we as a school system pay for that? We're going to transport the kids there. There's insurance, right? We're drivers. But yet, they won't have to go back to the school when they're done with their CTE classes because Herbie said, we're going to hire another one. And they are going to be at Meat Plant. That's what he said. And the kids won't have to travel back to the school because they're going to have a teacher there. I'm assuming they're endorsed in friggin' everything. Because if two of the meat cut, cutting kids have science and the other one has friggin' social studies and this one has English, I'm assuming those teachers that we're going to hire, they're going to be endorsed in everything because the kids don't need to go back to the school. But, but you guys are wanting more money. You've been here and we don't have money to give you money. But we have money to go pull some more teachers out of our tail ends. Where are they coming from? So why do we have money for that when we don't have money for you guys? That, that's what I need clarified. I don't understand it. Please make it make sense. I don't know.
So the five hundred thousand dollars for the meat processing plant wasn't anybody in here's money. It was from the ISM grant.
Well, I will stop you there, Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Would you like to, or I'll, I'll do it either one. The county is in recipient of another grant that's in excess of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which basically means the school system will have no money involved in the building and construction of that, of that facility.
Right, yeah, I know that.
So that.
But what about the insurance and the running and the upkeep?
All that's the county's responsibility. It's a county-owned bill.
Okay. Is the county going to pay for the teachers and their pensions and their vacation?
Well, that's where, that's where, that's where we need Mr. Adams to.
Who's paying the, who's paying the insurance on this? Who's paying all these teachers? I'm just curious. I'm not trying to be.
I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Herbie, but.
Yeah, I mean, I tried to ask before it was voted on, but I couldn't.
Seven minutes too, if you, before our next meeting.
The first year, the teacher's salary will actually come from ISM.
What's that?
Taking care of.
That's the grant.
Uh-huh. First year?
First year.
What about the insurance?
Insurance is covered just like the rest of our insurance and all of our other jobs.
I mean, what is our insurance raising? I mean, we're having youngins getting in there playing with big boy toys and they're cutting up animals.
A lot of big boy toys in there.
I am, yeah, of course you are. But so, okay, what's the insurance quote? Did it change any? That was, let me, let me reword that.
Question for Michelle. Any other?
Did the insurance change since they're going to be cutting up stuff? There's no raise in the insurance premium?
No, I mean.
Does anybody know?
Like it falls in, I mean.
It's under CTE. We have them dealing with equipment all the time.
Yeah, with welders and, and cutting.
Construction.
Saws and, and everything in construction, it shouldn't be any different.
Insurance equipment.
And if they do, then the trust will tell us if the insurance goes up when they do our audit every year.
I know, but as we were doing financial projections for our school, like we do a tiering step thing for our people, shouldn't we know that prior to signing up for this? If we don't know that it's done, has nobody done the legwork to be able to say, yes, Kim? Actually, it's a multi-plan. And so with your multi-plan discount, you're going to save a buck or two every year because now you're adding on more coverage. So we're going to give you a multi-plan discount. But how can you do financial projections on something you don't know? You don't know if, but you can tell these people for a fact that they can't have money because you don't got it right now. So I'm confused.
Well, I don't know if we're telling for a fact.
I mean, I'm just saying, I don't want it.
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to know what we're, what we're doing with the salary schedule? And something.
Yeah, let's get back to that. Yes, please. We just want to know.
And like, just to clarify, the, the five fifteen is a, the increase, that is just the step it takes to get them into the years.
Right.
We still want to ask you all for an increase for the teacher's salary for next year because we want them to receive at least what the new teachers are required to receive.
Right. So I, I would think work that up, Cindy, if, if you can work it up, Mike.
What's the possibility of maybe having a draft for us to see it Saturday?
Could you do that?
Yes, yes.
We've got a meeting next Saturday with.
But I would involve the staff.
That's what I would speak to.
Well, now, and what I would like to do is have just two, two, at least two members from every school.
How about the two?
I, I think right here we got two good ones. Like I said, the legwork is sort of already done and we can meet next week, but, you know, at least two from every school and then a board member. I know it's easier for them to meet at three thirty when they get out of school. So I, I do think it would help to have a board member on there as well.
I can't, so.
Yeah.
I mean, at convenience, I'm in the building. And I, and I, and I did carry the tablet.
You're the financial man, so.
I mean, I don't care at least.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
It's fine with you all.
I'll get with principals tomorrow, have them give me two names for, for every building and that includes for the high schools.
If you're willing, if you're willing to help the principal.
If you're willing to help, yeah.
Yeah, really.
Yeah. So we will get that set up early next week and thank you all so much.
Hey, Jan and Michelle, I, I really think Casey needs to be involved in that.
Okay, yeah.
If Casey has her run, I know Willie, Willie's.
Willie's.
Yeah. Thank y'all, thank y'all for coming out. We're going to, a break just in between. Got a regular board meeting in seven. You're welcome to stay, but we're going.